motion carry seven zero. A motion to approve the minutes of March fifteenth, twenty twenty one Board of Education Business Meeting. Motion, please. Barbara, second. Michelle. All in favor? I. Opposed? Motion carry seven zero. Now move on to statements and presentations. Sarah, are you ready?
Right, and.
That's good.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. This is the superintendent's report for April nineteenth, twenty twenty one. First, I just want to talk about the that NISBA, which is the New York State School Board Association, has a recognition program for its members, and there are four different levels, one through four, and ranging from points from seventy five points to five hundred points. And every workshop or conference or session that a school board member attends, they earn points. And I am very excited to share that we have three members Barbara McInerney, Erin Novak, and TJ O'Brien that are receiving a level one award. So they received seventy one credits. And they get a certificate, which I have here in hand, and we will make sure it get delivered to you. So congratulations to Barbara, Erin, and TJ on achieving level one. Hooray.
Congratulations to us.
Congratulations, guys.
We have two board members that have reached level two status for this year, and that is Matthew Buckley and Michelle Kaiser, and both of them have reached a hundred and fifty points during this school year. So congratulations to Michelle and Matt on achieving level two status. Yay. And I also have your certificates, and we'll make sure those will get delivered to you. And then we have a fireworks celebration for our level four status member. We have Susan Selsner reached a five hundred points this year, which is a lifetime achievement level four. She gets this plaque. It's not just her certificate, but it's actual plaque that she gets to get keep. And she gets a an executive pen set as a reward, which we have in the office. And she also gets to attend next year's convention completely free. So there's no charge to the district. So a heartfelt congratulation to Sue Selsner on her five hundred points of workshops for this year.
Bizarre. And it's not just this year, Sarah. It's as your time on the board starts when day one and continues till you leave. And I reached it. I don't. It's not for the year. It's forever.
Is there, because it's got years on it.
Really?
Twenty twenty one, yeah.
I didn't. It's hard to earn five hundred points in one year, but okay.
But I'm not saying.
I love it. I got my award. Thank you, and thank you to everybody who spends their time learning.
Yes, however you all did it. Congratulations. Bizarre. The board trustee signature forms were due back today. Mary received them, and we have these individuals that have are will be running for the Board of Education in the May election. We have Michael Emsworth, Patricia Kaminsky, Yuquan Lee, Jonathan Thurber, and Thomas O'Brien. The final arrangement on the ballot will be arranged by random draw tomorrow, and then Mary will call the five people that are running for, and there are three open seats currently. She will call them tomorrow to let them know what placement their name will be on the ballot. So thank you to those board members that are rerunning. Thank you to the new committee members that are willing to step up and run for election, participate in this process with us. And also, thank you to Barbara McInerney, who has decided not to rerun, but has spent her years in the board really dedicated to doing what's right for kids. And so thank you to Barbara for your years on the board and being such a valuable team member and giving your input to us. So that is our trustee elections that are coming up in May. On April thirtieth, at the elementary school, we will be selling celebrating Arbor Day. We'll be doing so in memory of Mr. John Finn, who was a very longstanding board member in Greenwood Lake. When I visited him in the hospital and I asked him, you know, what would he want his legacy to be? Or, you know, what would he want me to continue to make sure happened? He asked me to celebrate Arbor Day every single year. And so I made that promise to him. Unfortunately, last year, due to COVID, that it's right when we were just all out and no one was going anywhere. We're all locked in our houses. But I'm very pleased to be able to begin this new annual tradition in Greenwood Lake or bring back a tradition in Greenwood Lake. So what we will do is each year, the kindergarten class students will be given a sapling to watch grow along with them as they progress through their years in Greenwood Lake. So they'll always remember that they planted a kindergarten and be able to see it grow in their yard over the course of their years. And then this year, we will also be planting a tree in memory of Mr. Finn. And I believe it's a pear tree that we write, Mary.
Yes.
Yes, we're planting a pear tree in his memory, and that will be at the middle school as well. It will be a closed ceremony, so it will be for just the kindergarten class, maybe a couple of third graders, Board of Education members, and then members of the Finn family. But want to make sure we celebrated and honored John in this way. As for current enrollment in the district, we have a hundred and sixty six students at the elementary school, two hundred and ninety at the middle school. In-person instruction at the elementary school is a hundred and thirty eight, and there are twenty eight students that are remote. At the middle school, there are a hundred and eighty six students enrolled in person and a hundred and four currently remote. That does include quarantine students, so that's why that number changes as often as it does. And we do have a couple of classes remote currently at the middle school. We do have eighteen students that have been remote for the year that are set to return to in-person instruction for quarter four. Those are two students at the elementary school and sixteen students at the middle school. In terms of actual COVID, and this number changed very recently, we have had a total of forty five cases to date in the district, which is seven point three two percent of the total population. Our current positivity rate is four cases, and that gives as a zero point six five percent positivity rate. That is something that we keep track of every single day, every single case as to as a monitor for us in in district to know where we are with our numbers and where we are with cases. In terms of the county, the county had a three point three percent positive yesterday, and the seven-day average is four point seven percent. New this month, I am also sharing the CDC positivity rate and case rate, and that is because the new guidance that came out on April ninth from the state of New York has said that we now need to follow the CDC rates. The CDC rates are based solely on PCR or what they call NAT tests. They are not based on rapid tests. So you will see a significant difference between the counting numbers that I share from the New York Forward Dashboard versus the CDC rate, because no rapid tests count in the CDC number. So the CDC rate is currently seven point eight seven percent. That's their seven-day positivity for Orange County specifically. And the case rate per hundred thousand is two hundred and fifty two. And that does put us in the high zone. On tonight's agenda, we have the pandemic plan, and I'm going to have Ms. Polczynski speak for just a minute about the pandemic plan that's on the agenda and what it is and why we do it. Lena?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I wanted to go over the pandemic plan. So New York law requires that all public employers, which includes school districts, have to adopt a continuation of operations plan in the event that we are back in the situation we were in last spring, where the governor declares a public health emergency. Some of the things that are included in this pandemic plan are lists and descriptions of what an essential and nonessential position is, what those titles are, what the functions are. It also gives a specific description of protocols that we must follow for telecommunicating, whether we have to stagger work hours, et cetera. Description of how the district will be procuring PPE. We would also include exposure protocols, so that would be related to cleaning or time that we have to close the the school or the building, as well as identifying emergency housing within the school district.
So if the board has any questions about the pandemic plan or any comments about pandemic plan when we get to the agenda item, you can certainly do that. But just some example of essential functions and titles would be administrators. It would be food services. If you remember, we may had to make we made sure that we fed all of our students, and then we delivered it. So it would include transportation to make sure we can deliver food. Those are the things that they consider essential functions of a school district.
And the pandemic plan is also in a it's basically, we already have our restart plan and reopening plan, which is a lot more extensive. So this is another piece that needs to be attached to that.
During Facilities Committee last, thank you, Lena. During Facilities Committee last month, we had a conversation about the topic came up. You know, why do things, why are things so expensive when we do them? Why is something I pay a hundred dollars for to get done at my house so expensive when the district does it? And Anne LaRoe, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Business, explained prevailing wage, and it was a really eye-opening conversation for some of our board members. And so they asked that we share the information about prevailing wage at the board meeting as well, just to for those that are not familiar with the rules specific to how we have to pay people that come and work in district contractors. So Anne, if you're out there in Zoom world.
Yep, I'm here.
All right.
So prevailing wage is the pay rate set by law for work performed on public work projects. Contractors and subcontractors must pay all laborers, workers, and mechanics employed under a public work contract prevailing wage. The Bureau of Public Work administers Article eight and nine. Article eight covers public construction, and Article nine covers public service contracts. The Department of Labor establishes a wage schedule on a county-by-county basis. They contain the pay rates for each work classification. Under under law, all contracts between a government and entity and a contractor must contain these schedules. The examples of prevailing wage rates listed on this slide are valid until the next effective rate change or until the new annual determination takes place, traditionally on July first. Again, all contractors must pay these wages, and they can, and they include straight time, overtime, and supplemental benefits. So on this schedule, you see the prevailing wage rate, and it would be plus the supplemental benefits for each hour worked for straight time.
So when we hire an electrician, for example, we are paying minimally seventy five dollars per hour, and that's forty seven dollars plus twenty eight dollars. So that's seventy five dollars an hour. And then if it goes outside the school day, or I'm sorry, outside their typical work hours, then we start having to pay time and a half. Or if it's a holiday, there are special holiday rates. But all of these rates are mandated. We don't get to choose. We don't get to say, well, we're going to pay you this much, and we're going to pay this contractor this much. Everything is decided by the state. So this is one major reason why having work done in a school district is so much more expensive than in your private home.
Sarah, just want to point out that we don't pay them directly. That is through our bids for the job, correct?
Yes, we pay the owner of the company or whatever company we're contracting with, and then they have to pay their, they are supposed to pay their workers those rates.
Okay.
You guys have mentioned during our meeting that the contractors have to send us the breakdown of their employees, what they're being paid hourly and what their benefits are. And we can get audited by the state for that, too. Is that correct? Did I understand that properly?
Anne, you can answer that. You had.
Yes, the contractors and the subcontractors are required to establish, maintain, and preserve for six years accurate payroll records. And they must submit them to the county.
And we have to keep track of that as well, correct?
Yeah.
And so that.
Notarized wage schedule.
And we have to use these wages for no matter what, or like certain companies that we have to go with, is it have to be union? There's not like, what are those rules?
For all contractors, contracts over fifteen hundred dollars.
Union or non-union, right, Anne? It doesn't matter to us? That's just.
Correct. I didn't hear that question. Yes, union or non-union?
Any board members have any questions before we move forward? And for the community, all of our bit, all of our work over a certain amount goes out to bid, and we must accept the lowest bidder? Right, Anne? Well, I don't know what the dollar.
Lowest responsible bid. So if we have experience with a contractor and it didn't work out, we don't have to accept that bid.
Okay.
State testing, Ms. Polczynski?
Yes, okay. So tomorrow will be our day one of ELA this year. So we are taking day one of ELA and day one of math, which ELA is scheduled for tomorrow, and math will be scheduled for May fourth. And we have designated quiet spaces within our buildings for the students who have chosen to participate in the state assessments. They will be away from other classes and following all social distancing and safety protocols. Our remote students who have chosen to opt in and will be participating in the state assessments will be taking those assessments with their peers. Again, we will be following all of our safety protocols and physical distancing protocols. So at our elementary school, we've designated one space where where one class will be taking the assessment, given the number of students taking it. At the middle school, we have the gymnasium, which we will be splitting in half. So we have two spaces there, one space in the cafeteria, and we have a few classrooms for small group spaces. For the students who are choosing not to participate in the estate state assessment, it will be business as usual. Classroom instruction will continue as they do typically on a regular day, and we will be limiting all of our hall traffic and just ensuring that the students who are participating in our state assessments do have the quiet space that they need to participate in that.
And in addition, just to assure students that are taking the tests in terms of classroom instruction continuing as normal, teachers will be evaluating based on how many students are out of the room. If they have several students out of the room, obviously, they would do some review activities. In terms of teaching, they wouldn't introduce new material. We're not going to have students that are taking the tests have missed anything within the classroom or have to do makeup work or makeup assignments or anything like that. So it's we're trying to have the best of both worlds to continue instruction and support and academics for students that are refusing to test and also creating safe environments and testing conducive environments for those that are taking the test. So anyways, the if they are taking tests, they won't miss anything. I'm not a big fan of reading slides, but I am going to read this just because it just was out of the blue and wonderful to hear. So I got an email from a mom from Monroe Woodbury, who she also happens to teach at Chester, and she sent me an email about our cross-country team. And I just wanted to share it because it speaks volumes to our coach. But but more than that, it speaks volumes about our students as well. I am writing as a mom and teacher to tell you how wonderful the Greenwood Lake Modified Cross Country Team is and their coach. My daughter runs on the team from Monroe Woodbury, and we've ran against them twice already. I completely understand how it feels to be the smaller school going up against the big school, and it's intimidating for the teacher and the students. Their runners were so positive with each other, confident, and the boys were the only team we ran against that I saw air high five our team and say, good job to our boys. My heart just swelled for so many reasons. I wanted to say great job to the coach for instilling such values and positivity within his team. The coach is awesome. His runners are awesome. This is really special on so many levels. I did share this with Mr. Ferry, who was our cross-country coach. But to get something like this randomly from a parent really speaks volumes, and it just so proud of our school and the image we have out there in the public. So fantastic job to our cross cross-country team and to coach Ferry. There are two items on the agenda tonight that I wanted to just go over with you prior to you voting. And then if you have follow-up questions when it comes time for the vote, we certainly can have those discussions, or I can answer any further discussions. But just to give some background and also be able to notify the community of what the agenda items are. So the first one is our calendar. So the calendar for this school year, we are adjusting potentially on tonight's agenda. It's up for school board approval, and it relates to the snow give-back days as well as the formation of the last week of school and how that's going to be made up. So Friday, May twenty eighth, which is the Friday before Memorial Day weekend, the district would be closed for a give-back snow day. Then on Monday, June twenty first, skipping to the last week of school, on Monday, June twenty first, there would be a half-day early release, eleven thirty at the middle school, twelve thirty at the elementary school. There would be no three-hour delay that day. It would go return to a normal day schedule. Then on Tuesday, June twenty second, would be our last day of school. It would also be a half-day early release, eleven thirty for the middle school, twelve thirty for the elementary school. And then Wednesday, June twenty third, Thursday, June twenty fourth, and Friday, June twenty fifth, the district would be closed again due to give-back snow days. So those are the calendar changes that are on the agenda. And we did look at some other options as well, but decided this one was best for instructional purposes. Anne, if you just want to get ready to talk, I'd want to do the budget presentation. So I'm just going to pull that up. All right, so Anne, you're going to, I'm going to run through this, but you please chime in if there's anything that I miss.
Thank you.
So our budget development process this year started in December. We had one to two monthly meetings every month since December. We had board workshops, we had committee meetings, and then we had regular Board of Ed business meetings as well, where we talked about the budget. In terms of expenditures, we do have, we worked to minimize the additions to the budget simply to contractual obligations and then other absolute necessities. And this slide represents the items that were added into the budget. Creating a head bus driver position, making sure we have storage at the middle school, so renting a container for that water treatment above the middle school and the elementary school. There is additional training required for custodians and for bus drivers next year. So create finding a new system to manage that training and then continuing the use of MRF filters for next year and putting that in. And then the the big item for next year is the office PC. So all of the twelve-month staff, so the main offices, the nurses, the administrators, the transportation office.
Custodians.
Custodians.
Secretaries.
Yeah, all are on the schedule to be for their office PCs to be replaced. And judging by the number of complaints I've been getting about how slow their computer is, it is definitely time to make sure we get that done. So that is an additional purchase as well. In terms of expenditures and change, this slideshow shows the budget for this school year, and then it shows the proposed budget for NetDeck school year, and then what the increase or decrease is. So there's a slight increase in pupil transportation, slight increase in instruction, but you'll see everything else stays about the same. The total estimated expense increase is two point nine percent. In terms of revenues, revenues come from multiple different places every time, every year. One is from state aid and federal aid. Then we have the tax levy that which goes out to the taxpayers. Fund balance can be used to carry over from one year to the next. We have reserves, which I always refer to as our savings account, and we plan to use our retirement reserve to offset costs for this upcoming year. And then interest earnings, our money that we have in our savings accounts or in our different accounts does earn interest, and so interest, there is some interest earnings on our funds. The board at our workshop last week decided to move forward. They took the pandemic into account, as well as the slight increase to state aid. And they also decided to increase a little bit of that fund balance that carry over from one budget to the next, because they really wanted to make sure that there was no impact to the average taxpayer. So they went with a zero rate increase to on the tax levy. The tax levy potential increase was three point one four percent, and that would have still been within our quote-unquote two percent tax cap rate. However, again, due to the pandemic, the board felt strongly that we wanted to preserve our programs as much as possible with as the minimal impact to the taxpayer. So we are increasing our fund balance usage to carry over to make up that difference. Anne, I got, I'm good?
Yep, excellent. Thank you.
All right. We also did talk at our at our budget workshop last week about the creating a pandemic gap elimination adjustment line, and that's using our carryover funds from last year as well as this year to create a line. Because the last time that there was a an emergency like this, the impact to districts came about four or five years later, and we want to be the board, and the district wants to be prepared for that potential hit to our aid in three or four years. So we are creating a line that to hold that money for a few years so that if that cut in aid comes, we can survive that without having a devastating effect on our district. Just a very quick budget snapshot, the allowable tax levy limit was seventeen point four million dollars. The proposed tax levy from the district and from the Board of Education is sixteen point eight million. For a total savings, five hundred twenty nine thousand six hundred thirty one dollars. And again, the result of this budget that is on tonight's agenda for approval would be a zero tax rate increase to the Greenwood Lake taxpayer. Next steps after approval tonight, or hopefully approval tonight, there would be a public hearing on May eleventh on the budget. We have a flyer that we've already been working on that Mr. Petro and Ms. LaRoe have been working very hard on the last couple of weeks. So we're going to send a budget postcard out, and then we have the annual meeting, Board of Election and Budget Vote on May eighteenth.
Thank you, Sarah.
And then, last but not least, our principal reports. And I'm going to do Diane's unless Diane has joined us. Does Diane, are you out there? No. Okay, so I'm going to share Diane's principal report. She had a talked about Arbor Day. And in addition, she talked about that third-grade moving up ceremony. They invited any third-grade parent that wanted to be a part of the committee to. They invited any third grade parent that wanted to be a part of the committee to join them in the planning for the third grade moving up ceremony as well along with the third grade teachers. They had eight parents decide to join them. And so they are working on what that will look like for our third graders. We're looking at an outdoor ceremony either by class or as a grade level on the campus there in that last week of school. So that and then they will be meeting again next week to finalize that plan. And then Mr. Globchik, do you want to share the middle school report?
Hello, good evening. So on behalf of Kathy Castaldo, Cheryl Proll, and our eighth grade advisors, we're so thrilled to be collaborating on an in-person graduation ceremony for the students and families. We also, similar to how Ms. Hattan described, we met with our parent committee last week at the middle school and Ms. Castaldo, Ms. Proll, and myself have been meeting regularly over the last almost about a month to discuss the planning of the ceremony that we hope will mirror the traditions that you've all enjoyed, just on a smaller scale, since each graduate can have two guests. We look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday, June 19th with a rain date of Sunday, June 20th. And then the in the vein of Arbor Day, Student Government will be hosting Earth Day Celebration this week. There will be different events each day this week, such as participating in an interactive survey on Wednesday, engaging in an Earth Day themed costume contest on Thursday, and then using sidewalk chalk to write Earth Day messages to one another outside on Friday. And then also some of our art classes will also be engaging in Earth Day themed activities. And we will post on Friday a folder to Facebook highlighting this week's events.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And that ends my principal's report for this evening. I do some additional slides for our discussion in a few minutes, but that ends my principal's report tonight. So thank you.
Okay, thank you to Sarah, Jeffrey, Lena, and everybody that contributed. Any board members have anything to add tonight? Okay, high school reports. I it's been a quiet month up to the to the new guidance. Oxba did not meet this month in April. And NISBA has been busy with the budget, right Matt? We keep getting our advocacy emails. They're busy advocating for school districts.
It's almost daily.
Yes, I think one day there were three. It was crazy. But they are busy advocating for districts on the state level with the budget and they did a great job at with legislatures getting our state aid returned. So we are all thankful for that. We did not see the 20% proposed cut that was coming and then it kept getting reduced, but it was still supposed to be about 8% and we did not see that. PTSA, is there anybody from PTSA out here today? Okay, and I know Village of Greenwood Lake is having their meeting right now. So we could go right into our discussion topics. Sarah, which one are we starting with? Middle School Lobby. Did you want to give the highlights, Sarah? Maybe?
Sarah, you're muted.
I'm sitting there talking away, not realizing.
I'll do it.
And I was like, yes, I'm talking. Yeah, so the middle school lobby, the facilities committee has been monitoring the progress of the 2020 capital project. Over the last several months, they have done multiple site visits during the course of the project, after the project, getting updates, et cetera. The middle school lobby is something that has really drawn the attention of the facilities committee as something that needs to be addressed. And there's an interest in kind of finishing the lobby to bring everything together. So the capital project itself only addressed half of the middle school lobby space and never really, it didn't finish. So things look very mismatched. I'm going to show you some pictures in a minute. So we're going to look at the brick walls and either sheet rocking them or whitewashing the brick, address the crumbling tile mosaic that's on the wall there, looking at the different ceiling types and separating them, getting some new lights in the ceiling and then figuring out one floor tile. So let me show you what I mean. So when you walk into the middle school lobby, you kind of have this brand new space here in the front. And then as you get back, you have the older space and nothing ties together. If you look down at the floor, I my mouse is not working. But if you look down at the floor, right at the bottom half of this picture, you'll see a gray tile on the floor. And then you'll see the old floor in the back half. And what we'd like to do is install one tile throughout what we're, what the we call the Y zone. So it'd be this whole set zone and then off to where where that green door is there and then the green door on the left-hand side to create one unified space. If you look up at the ceiling in this picture, you'll see that the ceiling, the first half of the ceiling goes this way. And then the other half of the ceiling goes that way. So we're looking at installing a beam across to kind of separate those two spaces a little bit. And then in terms of the lighting, the new space, because we added on, we took some hallway space and that we eliminated some of that wall light space. It's a little, it can be get a little bit dark. So we're looking at purchasing round lights, similar to ones that are in the front half of this picture for the back half, but they'd be smaller, the size of one square unit of tile space and kind of putting those throughout. So again, kind of unifies the two spaces. And then at the back, looking at the whitewashing the brick or sheet rocking and telling the back brick walls. This is another angle of the space and that's, this is from the other direction. So again, you can see the two different floors, the two different ceilings, the two different types of lights, the two different type of walls, wall makeup. It's just, it's a very mismatched environment and we want to really want to work to try and unify that space. And then in terms of the tile mosaic, this has been an on, this is not a this year and it has nothing to do with the capital project. But the mosaic, as you can see in the picture, was built in 1995. And the grout and glue that held the mosaic together is crumbling and falling apart. You can see in these pictures that the tiles are literally chipping and falling out. In some places, bottom left-hand corner here, it's literally being held together with tape. And then pieces just keep falling out. So it needs to come down to be addressed to see if it's possible to preserve the piece. I talked to Mr. Ferry about it. He said you can't fix a tile mosaic standing up. You have to take it off and lay it down. And you'd have to chip the grout out one by one and try to fix it. And as you try to chip and replace, it might, the hole might get bigger. So what he suggested we do is, and we actually had talked about this at Facilities Committee as well, is take a really nice, high-resolution picture prior to taking the mosaic down to make sure that we have at least that to preserve. And we can always take it, blow it up and create and have a picture of this piece for future. But we want to make sure that we address this because it is crumbling. And I have a fear that one kid bumping into it could make the whole thing kind of fall apart. So so comments from Facilities Committee, Yuquan Su and TJ about any of the items? If we can go around and Facilities Committee can start about this work and then rest of the board can chime in. So the purpose of this discussion tonight is for the Facilities Committee to come back to the full board to see if the full board has an interest in moving forward with this. And then we would come next month with the proposal for the contract to do to do the work, depending on the feedback tonight. So.
Sure. Who would like to go first? TJ, Yuquan? Anybody? Yuquan? No girl, TJ, thank you.
It's hard to see in the picture, but where you see the break in the floor between the two different colored tiles. It doesn't even line up with the break in the ceiling where there's two different styles of tile in the ceiling. So it's kind of just like everywhere you go, it's like half-old, half-new. The lights are actually different levels of brightness. I guess if that makes sense, it gets like different shades of white. Like one's more of a blue, whereas the other one's more of a white. Then we have some tiles that are all water stained and everything underneath the the door to the seventh and eighth grade side, then the mosaic. And then there was also an issue with putting in the walls for the offices. We ended up losing one of the lights that if you look above the TV or on top of the mosaic, you'll see the wall lights there. We actually lost them on the other side of the wall. So it makes the one side of the the Y much darker than the rest of the area. It's just a shame that we have such a new space and everything in there and tied right into it issues old and not well balanced between the two.
Yuquan, did you have anything to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, at first it doesn't seem seem like a big deal when you enter the building. But if you look at this picture, this picture says it all, I think. That's a thousand words right there because everything looks mismatched. It looks like it looks like the building was put together at different times. The bad part, the right and left, the floor, where the security desk is, where that tile is on the floor and then all of a sudden, the tiles are different. When you look at the wall, you know, the continuation of the half-wall on your left from the front door all the way down with the same tile, but then the floors are different. Nothing really matches. So I, you know, the more I looked at it, the more I agreed that something needs to be done, just to just to bring things together a little bit. It looks, it looks really crazy right now. This picture says it all, I think.
Thank you, Yuquan. I do agree. It looks very disjointed, I think is a good word. And as the Facilities Committee, we looked at different options, trying to keep cost in mind also. That's why there's an option to look at whitewashing the brick, which would be less expensive than sheet rocking. And updating it and still at least the color scheme would be the same. One floor color floor tile, just to bring that together. It wasn't meant to be a big expensive project, but to just bring unify the two spaces together and try and do something with the ceiling and the lights to make it more uniform. So I hope the rest of the board supports that because you know, it is, it's disjointed. Anywhere other board members that aren't on the Facilities Committee have questions or anything to discuss?
I have one question about the the beam. Is the beam structural or is it just really for aesthetics?
It's it's aesthetic. It has to do with the, there's different pipes and things in the ceiling. So when they put the new ceiling in, they're not at the same height. So you have two separate heights there and there's also a separate one by the seventh and eighth grade side. That's always been there. But if we could somehow either sheet rock or wood, there were different options discussed over time to help make them less less noticeable by putting a beam in. It's totally aesthetic and fake, you know, just whatever somebody, different ideas we have out there. Anybody else?
Is this new money we're going to use or how does this work in terms of this come out of the capital fund or?
Anne, you wanted to address that. There's two different possible answers to that. Anne, do you want to answer that?
It's my understanding that it would not come out of the capital fund.
So Anne, can you explain why the Facilities Committee would not want to use the capital fund money and use some of our exception money to do this as opposed to going with the capital fund money?
We would have to go out to bid. We would have to have it approved by SED. And all of that takes a very long time.
In addition, we were just really not happy overall with the work that was done by the people that did the project over the summer. We would not, we would, if we use capital project money, we basically, if we didn't go back out, we would have to go with those same contractors. And we're hoping to do this work with people that we've worked with before and have more of a trust and more of a relationship with. So therefore, we can't, we can't really go out, we can't really use the capital money because we would have to use those same contractors. We don't want to have to use those contractors.
Are we, are we looking to get like different opinions on what to do or we already have someone in mind or? Is that one person going to provide us different, you know, we're talking about the back wall? I don't know, like someone gonna it's kind of hard to just say like it's gonna look great painted, you know, I don't know.
So, so I understand what you're asking. We can certainly try and find some sort of interior designer to consult with and maybe can play pay a consulting fee for to come in and look at the space and help us bring everything together and choose a floor color and a wall color and decide whether to whitewash or sheet rock and help us with that. We can absolutely do that.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I don't know what everyone else's opinion is on that. I'm just
Aaron, a point that we were at with the three of us and Anne and everybody else was to take down the ceiling lights, the the wall lights, have them update the TV box. Whether that be sheet rock or whitewash, either way, just to to bring just the lights in the ceiling and update it because the oak, the kind of outdated at this point with the new part. But we couldn't really go any further without going to the full board.
The intention to do this over the summer, I guess, or?
Yes. Yes. Any other question?
I mean, I'll find with looking into it further. I mean, this picture, Yuquan, right, says it all. A lot going on.
Yes. Anybody else have any questions or comments and then feedback on to move forward or not, please?
I agree with, I mean, it looks really disjointed. But I'm going to agree with Aaron, maybe we should consult some sort of interior designer to see what's more cost effective. I would just hate to do work and then it doesn't look good.
Okay. Definitely. The whitewashing came came out of a conversation because the sheet rock was more expensive. And that why that was tossed around, I don't know if we actually, did we ever get an actual estimate from anybody, Sarah? I honestly don't remember.
We did. Rob, are you out there in Zoom land? What do we, I know we don't have three quotes for everything yet because of the facilities, because the Facilities Committee asked for three quotes for each of the different parts of the project. But Rob, do you have the? I knew you have some quotes back.
Yes, we, we have some quotes back.
Is Rob out there?
We have. I'm sorry. We have two quotes for the paint and the carpentry, two for the floor tile and one for the lighting. The quotes we have for the paint and the carpentry right now, we have a range from 8,500 to 11,500. The floor tile, we have 6,500 to 15,000. And we have an estimate for the round lights in the ceiling at $1,900.
I think this is what spawns, you know, spawns the prevailing wage conversation. Because it seems like a lot of money in our discussion for some Because it seems like a lot of money um, in our discussion for some paint and or sheet rock. And that's how we got to prevailing wage, but it was, um, to the rest of the board, it was really, we're just. Trying to gauge if it was even worth taking it to the rest of you. Um, or if it was so much money that it wasn't, but the, the definite look of the lobby is um, needs some work. Uh, Matt, any comment?
I, I like the brick, you know, so I'm for the whitewashing, like, to me that brick has always been, you know. Nice, you know, I've said it from day one, whoever did that brick did a nice job. That's probably the nicest thing in the lobby personally. But uh. Uh, my question is with the lighting. Is, is the ceiling grid like part of the carpeting? And because I know when they put in that round light again, you're gonna have to redo the ceiling grid again. Like, is all that included and everything?
Um, I can answer that, Matt. We, um, Anne and Rob went out and um. I'm not sure where they found it, but they found round lights that will fit within our existing grid and be similar. To the other lights without having to spend the money to replace the whole grid since there's nothing actually wrong with the grid. Just went down to the size of the light. Right, Sarah?
Yep, so they're just, they're smaller, that these ones are bigger, they're almost four square big, these are the smaller one square big. Lights that would fit right into the square tile, so you take the tile out and pop the light in. That's the plan.
I like the idea of the beam to separate the different directions of the grid, absolutely. That was the first thing that caught my eye the first time I ever walked there. But yes, I, that's a great idea. And I think we should pursue it, why not?
Okay, I, I will say the beam has made me crazy since I walked, my first walk through in August. Um, I look up, apparently, maybe others don't, but I do, and it, it has really. Visually disturbing to me, but um, I've learned to live with it. And. Anybody else have any comments? Michelle, you taught, we, we've all kind of gone through, Michelle, more?
I just have, Sarah, can we just get a quote on what uh, what it would be to have an interior designer? To consult an interior designer? Because they would have more or less of an idea of, you know, what's gonna be cost effective, what's gonna look better. But I also don't wanna, you know, go crazy spending either.
When it comes to the interior decorator, what are you guys looking for them to do in particular?
Bringing the space together. Right now is, well, we have four different colors going on there. This, that's all.
Professional opinion to, to join the two spaces?
I got it, Steve. Because. The floor tile that, I don't know, Sarah, bring the picture up again. The. Floor tile on the first half of the lobby. That's the tile that we're looking to just extend out throughout that whole Y to where the fire doors are. Be, because that's the tile in the lobby and the new offices. So we're just, we're using that where the fire doors are. Like, we weren't looking to rip out what we just had done, it was just continuing that new clean, fresh. Out and through. The only real thing when it came to. Real thing when it came to designing was just with the brick of, okay, do we whitewash it or do we put? Put sheet rock on it, but like, all the colors and everything are staying the same, the floor tile color is the same. Um, as it is in the front half of the picture.
So TJ, can I interrupt? So, so that, if, so that, I think you're uh, the front half wall color tile was actually not what was intended for that space. Um, and they ended up substituting, so it is possible that the, that the new, the small section at the front, the new tile would be replaced. In this work. Um, it wasn't just extending this color because this wasn't the intended color for the space as it was.
That's not what we have in our offices?
No.
I'm going crazy then.
Maybe a little.
I didn't say it.
Uh, there's carpeting in some of the offices and in the main office, there's that fake wood looking. Stuff.
Uh, that's right, okay.
Are those doors usually open?
Yes.
So like, it's gonna be, we're saying we're gonna just cut off the new tile right where the door is. Because when you're really in the lobby, you're still gonna see the directions.
I don't know if you can see it in the next picture. You can't, um, I don't have it, but in the back left. Door, the door that you can't see here, there's a green strip of tiles across the way that separates the lobby area from the hallway area. And Rob has plenty of that green. Not enough to tile the whole thing, nor that we necessarily want to, but he has enough to create a second strip over on the right hand side. That there's a line separating the two areas from one another and we're looking for something to complement and not be. A color that's so opposing to the tile down the hallways. But we'll be installing a strip of green in between to separate the two.
And also, seventh and eighth grade side has one tile, a different tile than what is actually you see that's there that goes to the right. It's actually a different tile to the left than it is when you go to the right. Which I never noticed until I started looking at the lobby. Um, and there's also the brick. Soffit, you know, it drops down where the doors are, so. They're open during the day, they're not open at night, but. Does provide some type of visual break, I don't know. We can look and see what um. An interior designer could cost us and get back to the board. If, if you guys could do that and at our next facilities meeting, we, we would. Be able to talk about that or send it to the whole board right away. So we can move forward. If everybody's okay moving forward with that. And that's kind of what I heard, everybody's moving forward.
Yep, okay.
Okay, Sarah, next topic.
All right. Next and final topic is the COVID protocols guidance. So let me share my screen. Go here. Okay, so New York State revised its guidance on April ninth based on the new CDC guidance that came out in late January, early February. Um, and so Greenwood Lake was already, we were already thinking about doing some small changes. Uh, and this guidance allows us to continue to make those changes, um, but there really isn't a whole lot that we have to do differently. Which is great news. So general protocols. In terms of masks. Uh, if you remember, we had a lot of discussion about this back in August and early September and then the Orange County. Commissioner of Health came out with an executive order stating that masks are a requirement in Orange County. Uh, the new, new guidance for New York State makes that moot because New York State now mandates the masks, so. Dr. Gellman has actually repealed her mask mandate because it's now mandated by the state. So in terms of what we do and how we do it related to masks, nothing is going to change, it's just a change in who has made the decision that we have to wear masks in schools. The quarantine rules were also updated. In the past, for the majority of the school year, if there was a positive case inside a classroom. Anyone within that classroom needed to. Quarantine. If there was a positive case, anyone in that classroom needed to quarantine. The CDC guidance eliminated reference to proximate contact, so the difference between a close contact and approximate contact. A close contact is someone within six feet for more than ten minutes. Approximate contact is someone else in the classroom and that we had to quarantine those proximate contacts as well. The April ninth, New York State guidance does not address close contacts versus. Close contacts versus proximate contact. However, it does reference that we are, all of their decisions are based on the CDC guidance. On April fourth, I attended a webinar and there was a question specific to approximate contacts. And the, they said, quote, "To underscore, even though students are permitted to sit three feet from one another in a classroom setting. For the purposes of contact tracing, the six feet close contact rule continues to apply." So what that means in practice is that contact tracing will look for individuals who have been within six feet of a case for at least ten minutes in a twenty-four hour period, even when masks are worn. Uh, so we have, we will have started and will be looking to quarant, if there's a case in the classroom, we will quarantine any individual that's within six feet of that person. The other individuals in the class, we will all, we let them, we will let them know that there was a case in their classroom, but that they do not necessarily need to quarantine. We will let parents decide whether they want to keep their kid home or send their kid into school. So we'll be moving forward uh, with that and have, and looking forward with that. Uh, if anybody wants to watch the webinar, there is a link here and the question eight specifically where that quote was taken from is at the fifty-five minute mark. Uh, we have also heard from the Dr. Gellman that she is not going to stand in the way of the New York State. Rules and their comments in the webinar, although she is not willing to put that in writing, so, but we. Uh, do have that verbally from her through the OU Bozese District Superintendent. Questions on quarantining or are changes related to quarantining?
Welcome change. That's what we've been after.
Yes.
It's what now happens everywhere else can happen in school.
Yes. Quarantining after vaccination, if an individual is fully vaccinated, and that means more than two weeks past their final dose. Or if they have had COVID and are within three months of their diagnosis, they do not need to quarantine after exposure, they simply need to monitor for any development of symptoms. Um, and then if they develop symptoms, they need to isolate and contact a medical provider. So, uh, that is also a welcome change and has really already saved us a lot. We have several teachers that have. Been in classrooms where a student tested positive and the teacher can continue doing what they're doing in their classroom from that point on. It's been great in terms of continuity and instruction for all students. So, and I would argue that probably fifty to seventy-five percent of our staff are fully vaccinated at this point. Or in the process, so. Also, great news in terms of continuity of instruction. Uh, in terms of running the school and how things change, again, the CDC, and I alluded to this a little bit earlier with looking at the CDC. Changes, but uh, they only again look at uh, NATS or PCR tests, they do not look at rapid tests. And we get placed in a category. So right now, for example, our numbers. Our cases are about just over seven percent, I believe. Which would put us in the moderate transmission window. However, total new cases about is per one hundred thousand is two hundred fifty-two, which would put us here. And the CDC rule is whichever one out of the two, if they're not the same, whichever one is higher is the one that applies to us. So there is a handy dandy website, and again, I have it linked below. That you can go to, you click your state, you click your county and it spits out at you what your current transmission rate is and the rules you have to follow. So the CDC set out the prevention strategies by level of community transmission. And I'm gonna go over this briefly, but the bottom line for us is we don't really have to change anything. Uh, we are cohorting in every single grade level, every single classroom K through H, and as long as we're cohorting at any level. Students can sit within three to six feet of each other. So in terms of our elementary classrooms, we can go down to three feet. Uh, so we will move forward with teacher prerogative to adjust seating within the classroom if they want to put students within three feet of each other. The thing to keep in mind for teachers is that the exception to this rule is when students are eating, they must be six feet apart. So if student, if teachers do move desks together for part of the day, they would either need to move back apart during lunchtime. Or students would need to move to different parts of the room, so they're at least, at least six feet apart. We do not plan on changing or adjusting homerooms or schedules based on this guidance. So everyone is gonna stay in the homeroom they're in, we're not gonna try and collapse grade levels or classrooms to get three feet in and, and all of that mess, we're gonna leave everything as is. The same thing in the middle school. The middle school, though, just so you know, the rule is three feet, but only if you're cohorting, which we are doing. So again, we're gonna recommend teacher and principal prerogative to adjust the seating within the classrooms down to three feet. However, when students are eating again in their classrooms, uh, they must be six feet apart. That is a rule that is unbending and unwavering. And again, we're not gonna be changing or adjusting any homerooms or schedules based on this guidance. In terms of singing, playing instruments or exerting energy in PE. The distance between students has been reduced down to six feet. It was at twelve feet, so this is also huge in terms of choral brand practices, et cetera. Mr. Lee now doesn't have to take up the entire cafeteria. When he has a band practice, he can have the kids a little bit closer together. Uh, so again, here, we're just gonna recommend teacher prerogative to adjust the student desks in the, in, in these locations. We're not gonna force them to change, but if they want to change for part of the lesson or part of the day, they can do so. Uh, we, we're in talks again prior to the guidance coming out about specials. So the students have really been confined to one classroom almost the entire day, other than their outside time for the majority of this school year. And so we've been, the principals have been talking and I've been talking to some of the specials teachers about. How can we get teach students out of the classroom but still be within guidance? So PE has already been going outdoors or going to the gym, uh, if it's raining, so we will continue doing that. Um, in music, the elementary school, they're working on setting up the second half of the gym as a music classroom, so students could travel to music. And middle school, we have the band room and we also have the cafeteria. But only one class at a time, so for example, a fourth grade and seventh grade has music at the same time, they would have to work out the use of that space, we're not gonna put. Cohorts in that one space. Um, in art, we are going to reinstate the art room at the elementary school, or we would like to reinstate the art room at the elementary school. And in the middle school, it would be dependent on the activity, the art room is currently being used as a classroom. It still needs to be used as a classroom due to the size of the space. Uh, so, but uh, in talking to Mr. Ferry, he could do classes outdoors, he has the computer lab across the hallway that he can use, he's got some different ideas. Um, but there may be times I need to stay in the classroom as well. Uh, the library, I had talked to Mrs. Arifeld and at first she was a little hesitant and then she wrote me back, she says, "I don't know what I was thinking." "Yes, I need my kids back." And so, um, this, we're gonna give the students the opportunity to visit the library as well. Um, and she actually wrote me back and says, "Can I start right now?" And I said, "No, you can't start right now, we have to." Go through our uh, feedback from staff, feedback from parents, which I've done two meetings for, and then feedback from the board this evening and then I'll be able to move forward. Um, in terms of guidance, guidance does not have classrooms, they have smaller offices, so guidance would need to stay as a special in the regular classroom in both buildings. We will make sure that we are uh, using disinfecting wipes between classes and the teacher would be responsible for figuring out the management of that. Um, but we are looking to have students start moving through the school just a little bit to get used to um. Regular school. Questions at all about any physical distancing at the elementary school, middle school, band, chorus? Or specials or moving at all? I'll stop there before I continue. Questions or comments from anybody?
I'm all for specials. I've had it.
Sounds good, Sarah.
All right, the next question I've been getting a lot is what about lunch? So again, the lunch rule is still six feet. We would like to slowly introduce the cafeteria to one class at a time. One thing that Mrs. Connolly brings up consistently. Uh, is that our little kindergartners have been to the caf, never been to the cafeteria, that didn't even know that the cafeteria is there. Um, and we want to get them down there and kind of practicing a little bit and having lunch in the cafeteria before they go to first grade. So we'll slowly start introducing the cafeteria one class at a time at the principal discretion and they'll. Uh, work on that with the teachers and things. Uh, the meals would still be packaged and delivered, right? So we're not gonna have students going through the line. Um, they are still gonna be packaged, prepackaged meals. Um, but just at least eating in, in the cafeteria. If the quarantine protocols stay within just six feet. We would explore bringing uh, more than one class down. And to see how many would fit in that space. Again, it would have to be six, be seated six feet apart. If we can only, and that's really relies on, can we quarantine just the people within six feet of an individual? If they come back and say, "We have to start quarantining the entire space again," then we, we would take that back. So we're gonna kind of tip our dough in the water, see how things go and, and kind of move from there and watch our data and watch our numbers and things. Uh, one, an other item in the. Guidance was about test. guidance was about testing students for COVID, and that if we decide to go down to three feet, that they strongly consider, that they urge us to strongly consider doing COVID screening testing on our students. We do not recommend moving forward with testing at this time, we are not going down to three feet on a permanent basis, it's going to be up to teacher prerogative. And we have talked extensively over the past six months, six to nine months, twelve months, about not having to subject kids to testing if we don't absolutely have to, if it's not mandated. So again, we do not recommend moving forward with the screening testing. Questions about any of those items, lunch, screening, or comments? Screening, testing, or lunch?
Yes, Sarah.
Yes, Yuquan.
I think bringing the kindergarten class to lunch is number one priority. That should be, that should be, you know, that should be like a little field trip for them.
They're going to have to be trained. Know what to do in there.
Well, it's going to be awesome for them.
It's exciting. All right, looking at extracurricular activities, so spring sports. For the fall two sports, we did not allow spectators from the visiting team. Is our recommendation that we allow two spectators from the visiting team for our spring sports. They are all outside, our policy procedures went well, our COVID sports overseer positions, we're going to have the same person in for spring sports, that's on the agenda this evening. So we recommend allowing two spectators for the visiting team as well. In terms of the bathroom for players and for spectators, we have porta potties that have been ordered, and I think are either being delivered this week or already in place, but they will be out there for use. Sports overseer is still a part of the guidance as a requirement. And then in terms of the nurse, we had the nurse at the fall two sports for the soccer games only, and it was specifically due to a concern about the field condition, she also helped by taking the temperatures of all the spectators, et cetera. We may request having a nurse at certain times, for example, a double game day, when we have both softball and baseball happening at the same time, that's twice as many spectators, twice as many players. But so I just wanted to get the board's feelings on some of these things, really specifically the spectators and the nursing role.
Okay, Matt, you want to give your opinion?
Sure, I'm all for it. I like the idea of the two spectators, absolutely.
Do we need a nurse?
The nurse, yeah, I think it's up to, you know, whatever Sarah says, really. Yeah, I don't see the need for it personally, but if you think so with the double games, couldn't hurt. So I'm for it.
Okay, TJ?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. Happy to see our strides, you know, back in normalcy. And same thing, I, we didn't normally have the nurse, but I understand the need for it. If you think for the double headers, so whatever you think you need, I'm cool with.
Okay, Aaron?
Yeah, I'm all for the spectators. Again, we were allowed to look in other places where everything went smoothly, so I don't think we'll have any issues with that. And I'll leave the nurse in Sarah's hands, I don't, I don't know if it's necessary, but we have a lot more people around than local.
Okay, Michelle?
Yeah, I'm all for it, I just have one question regarding the spectators, is there like capacity limit? As far as the guidance goes, like how many people were allowed, how many spectators are actually allowed?
So it's two per player, that is, we cannot have more than two per player. Of a maximum number right now for outdoor venue events without having to check for vaccination records, it's two hundred people, but we won't get to two, I don't think we'll get to two hundred.
Okay, but it's, so it's, the guidance says we are only allowed to have two spectators.
The, the section.
Nine.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to think of it, section nine of New York State, I actually think it's both have the two spectator rule.
Okay, I don't, I don't know if NISVA has updated, but section nine was two spectators per player. Started out just home team, then they added partway towards the end. Opposing team also.
Yeah, I'm just asking because I know it's some, you know, I guess some of the rec sports, the guidance had changed and it was just based on capacity. All right, yeah, I'm all for these two spectators from the visiting team. And as far as the nurse, I think I will leave that up to your discretion and the coaches.
Okay, Yuquan?
Yes, I'm all for it.
Okay. Barbara, nurse Yuquan, I'm sorry, no, you're okay with whatever?
Yeah, if, you know, I, I don't, I don't really see the need to have a nurse there all times. But if, yeah, if, if there's a need for it, there's a need for it, okay, at certain times.
Okay. Barbara?
Um, the spectators sound good to me, as long as all the guidance is followed and everybody does what they're supposed to be doing, right? Why not? And I agree, as far as the nurses are concerned, pretty much with the consensus, so, you know, whatever Sarah recommends. Yes.
Okay. Um, and I'm fine with spectators and whether, whatever you need, it's going to be a lot of people or whatever, whether it's a nurse or someone else to take temperatures and check people in, whatever you need.
Got it, okay, thank you very much. Outside curricular events, so we have, for in terms of our clubs and activities in school, we haven't had any outside of school in-person meetings because we didn't want clubs and mixing cohorts, you know, in school after the end of the school day. However, there's been a lot of singular events that have come out as requests from different clubs, for example, doing a car wash, participating in a five K, participating in the town's spring cleanup. And these are singular outdoor events where it's not an ongoing thing every week, but it's a singular event that the group would go to follow all of the COVID protocols, and then it would be done. And so I lean towards allowing our groups to participate in these kind of one-off events as long as they're outside, where the possibility of catching COVID or being exposed to COVID is quite minimal. And then in addition, we are working on a field day plan. And we didn't really, the principals didn't really talk about that, but the principals have been meeting with the PE teachers to see how we can do a, some sort of working, some sort of field day for the students. And it probably will be cohort based, it'll be not what it typically is, we want to do, we do want to try and do something for the kids. So just any board thoughts on outside curricular events and singular events?
Is everybody okay with moving forward with the extracurricular events? Anybody have any comments?
Yes, please, yes.
Question about that.
Yep.
Does that include, say, little league baseball, softball?
So I'm getting to that in one second, that's under facilities use, so I'm going to get to that in one second.
All right, so yes, I am for it.
All right, I heard yes is forever, I didn't hear any objection, I'm going to move forward with that. All right, other facilities use. So our reopening plan allows for outdoor facilities used by community organizations. However, it was suspended for quite a while because the rate of infection was over five percent. The seven day rate of infection is currently four point seven percent, which, which would allow outdoor, I'm sorry, community organizations to use our fields and things, they cannot use our buildings, but they could use our fields. As per our current plan, if the rate goes back over five percent, then that would be suspended. So any conversation, we had a request from a board member to have a conversation about this specifically.
Yes, I think the fields are needed, especially being that sports and everything are back now. Just for me, I'm not part of Little League anymore, but I know that the seniors and the juniors team don't have a field to play on unless they play for, use that school field. So otherwise, we would have to play away and, and all that stuff. But yes, I think it'd be helpful for everybody if the community could use the fields from now on, yes.
So Matt, do I hear you saying that even if it goes over five percent? The rate, and if so, are, are you?
I, I'm fine with even if it's over five percent, because most of these, most of these clubs have their, you know, COVID protocols in place to begin with, when they go anywhere.
Is there, where did five percent come from?
That came from the state guidance in terms of the rates of infection, in terms of levels of concern, in terms of community transmission. So there was a zero to four percent, it had to do with opening schools and closing schools at the beginning of the year. So zero to four percent schools were open, at nine percent schools had to close, and anything between five and nine percent was kind of this gray window in between, like get ready for closure, or you could start getting ready to reopen. So it was based on those benchmarks set by the New York State Department of Health way back in August.
Do you have a recommendation on using the fields? Community use?
Um, so I, I think that we just got under five percent, four point seven percent now. I think I'd be okay with it going up to, you know, seven or nine percent. If, if we get to a point where our rates are going back up and spiking again past seven or nine percent, I would recommend suspending it again. The whole point of this is to try to, to limit the spread and, and, you know, but it is an outdoor event, and I understand that, as opposed to an indoor event, which we're not allowing. And it is baseball, which is different than soccer, or different than football, which is an event where closely together, baseball, it's kind of, it's by design, individuals are far, a little bit farther apart. So I, I would be open and, and support some, either seven percent or nine percent for rate of infection to close it down again.
Okay, um, you, I'll go through board members, um, Michelle?
I'm fine with the, with the community using the field, even if the rate was over five percent.
Okay, Barbara?
Um, I'm fine with it as well. That seven and nine percent scares me a little bit, I'm not going to lie. But, okay.
Okay, Barbara, Yuquan? Use the field?
Yes, let's use the fields.
Okay. TJ?
Yeah, I'm cool with it.
All right, Aaron?
I'm good with it.
All right, so am I, Sarah, use the fields. Okay, rates go up, you can come back to the board. If you feel that it's going too high and you'd like to make a recommendation, you could come back to us.
Okay, so I will, I, I will, in the, so I have, we have to update our plan with New York State, Department of Health as well as New York State Education Department, we have to have it posted on our website, et cetera, and provide the links, the powers that be. So we would take out, this would be suspended if the rate of infection reaches five percent, and we would, I'll just put something about this will be reviewed based, by the district, based on the current rate of infection in the community.
That's a nice way of being gray.
You know I can operate in gray, if things are black and white, I'm a rule follower, but I can operate in gray too.
That's a nice gray area there for you.
Okay. All right, and then the last question that I get consistently, and I get it from parents, I get it from kids, and I really get it a lot from teachers, is what's next and what can we anticipate for fall? And I just want to say that there is, the state is very, very clear, and then it says we are to prioritize efforts to return all students to in-person instruction. So then the next question I get is, well, what about remote learning? Will that be an option for the fall? And the answer is, I, I don't know. We will use the health and safety related data and feedback from this school year, as well as rely on any updated guidance that comes up out between now and then about whether remote learning would be an option. And just so everyone's aware, the three foot rule that is currently in place would allow us to reinstate most, if not all of our programs next year. So we could bring back, with the three foot rule, we can bring back Spanish, we could bring back project, those types of programs. And I know that that's a clear goal of ours, even as evidenced by our budget development this year, and keeping those programs as a part of our budget. So, the answer is, we know we're going to be returning to in-person, we don't know if remote is going to be an option, but the three foot rule, as long as it stays, it will allow us to bring most of our programs back. And that's it. For your feedback, everybody, on these items this evening.
I have one more thing to throw out to you guys, and that is possibly returning to in-person meetings. For board meetings? Does anybody have any feedback? I know one of my concerns is our audio quality is better on Zoom. Except now. Someone's got an echo, but, um, does anybody have any comments, suggestions, anything about returning to in-person meetings? And whether or not we would have public live streaming, however it works.
It'd be nice if we figured out a way to be in person, but also be on a Zoom conference, something like how we are now, so that people can still stream in without having a horrible audio issue like we've had in the past. So nice that Sarah can present on here. I mean, prior to COVID, our meetings that were recorded, there's a lot of the times that you, I mean, if you went back and you watched the video, because you couldn't make the meeting, you couldn't even read the presentation from the screen.
I, I agree that's definitely a concern, TJ. It's nice, everybody gets to see everything very clearly, other board members, your comments?
I'm for whatever the majority wants to do, I'm easy.
Okay, Sarah, is there anything we can do as far as upgrading the audio, so people can hear? That was our biggest complaint, is people couldn't hear prior to COVID.
We will certainly work on it. If the, if the board decides to move in that, that direction, we will absolutely work on the audio. I think what I would do is I would make sure that I stayed on a, on a mic and on my computer for my presentations, so the audience can see the presentations live, we continue to run, live, we could continue to run it on Zoom, and we will work to figure out the sound. So we would do test runs between now and then.
Okay, um, anybody else have any comments? Aaron, in person, not in person?
I'm, I'm good with whatever everybody wants to do, as long as everyone can hear us. I'm with the majority on this one, whatever everyone thinks.
Michelle?
I'm finding either way. Audience is still going to go via Zoom, so.
Um, okay, I guess it's something that, uh, we can see if our our techni, technical issues can be worked out, Yuquan, do you have a preference, in person, not in person?
No preference, as long as, if we do go in person, you know, we really would have to make sure that people are able to, to log in or come in, whichever.
Right, most other districts are live streaming meetings if they're not on Zoom. So they're happening live. But it would be working out the other technical parts of seeing presentations and things, and audio quality. Sarah, maybe run it past Mike and see what can be done and send us an email or something?
So if, if you guys tell me, we will make.
How we could improve our audio?
Yep, sorry, um, so you guys tell me that.
Nobody has a preference.
So, well, so I just, I need to know, if you tell me we happen in, we will make it happen. That's not, don't, we will make it happen. If, if you don't wanna, we're for, then we won't spend our time, you know, it, it will take time and effort, but we, we can absolutely make it happen, or we can continue this way, I just might need a direction.
Okay, um, well, nobody has a preference, I was throwing it out there for you guys, um. Anybody, I guess we could continue on Zoom or another month and we can revisit it? I, I don't know, I, I was trying to move forward.
I wouldn't mind going back to in-person.
I'd like to be on Zoom forever, for what it's worth.
Barbara has two meetings left and she'd like them on Zoom. Um, but anyway, um, I, you know, somebody can make a decision, I, I was throwing it out there, I was the one that preferred to be home more than probably anybody, um, and I was trying to be cooperative. So we could just do with a yes, no, or move on and pretend I didn't say anything. I don't know.
Move on and pretend you didn't say anything.
Thanks, Barbara, I wasn't talking to you. Okay, no one has a preference, I was, um, I don't wanna make that decision, so I guess we'll say as is. TJ, you wanted to move, move back to in-person?
Yeah, I would like to go back to normal already.
Michelle?
Hi, yeah, I was gonna say, why don't we just leave, you know, um, virtual for a month and then revisit it a month from now?
Okay, well, revisit it next month, everybody, please think about going, returning to in-person next, for a conversation next month, sorry, I sprung it on you.
So just so everyone knows, next month's meeting is in May, and it is the budget vote and election. So Mary and I and Ann will be in-person anyway. Uh, we will be there for, to, for the evening, so, just in case you see us there, you didn't miss it. First behind you.
Alright, that concludes our topics of discussion. We can now move to privilege of the floor. If anyone would like to speak, please give your name and limit it to three minutes. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, we can move on to our agenda items. A motion to adopt the 2021-2022 School District Budget as Presented. Can I have the motion, please? Aaron, second? Michelle, is there any discussion on the budget? All in favor, please say aye? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion to approve the financial reports for March 2021 as presented at this meeting, motion, please? Matt, second, TJ, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to adopt, uh, agreement like union for school district protocols for responding to a public health emergency as presented, the pandemic plan. Motion, please? Matt, second? Aaron? Any discussion? I think we had that. All in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion to adopt policy number 7551, sexual harassment of students as presented. Um, we are waiving the second reading on this and, and adopting. Motion, please? Matt, second, TJ? Any discussion? For the community, it's just an update to our policy. And all in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion to approve the SMOA between the district and the GLTA as presented? Motion, please? Matt, second? TJ, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion to amend the 2020-2021 student calendar as presented, a motion, please? Matt, second, Michelle, is there any discussion on the calendar as Sarah presented it before? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to approve the OU Bosse's Cooperative Purchasing Agreement as Presented? A motion, please? Aaron, second, TJ? Um, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion to approve OU Bosse's Cooperative Transportation Services Agreement as Presented, motion, please? Matt, second, TJ? Any discussion? Motion, okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to approve the Arrow Plumbing Change Order as Presented? Michelle, motion? Second? Somebody? Yuquan? Is there any discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to approve the Health Services Contract with the Goshen Central School District as Presented, motion? Aaron, second, TJ? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion to approve the Health Services Contract with the Warwick Valley Central School District as Presented, a motion? Matt, second, Aaron? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to approve the leave of absence of Samantha Hayek as presented, a motion, please? Matt, second, TJ? All in favor? Opposed? Uh, motion carries 7-0. A motion to approve, to appoint Vanessa Villamil as permanent daily substitute as presented, motion? Matt, second? Yuquan? A, uh, there's no discussion?
You're muted, so.
Sorry, I leaned on it. A motion? We have our motions, the vote, Matt? The second was, I don't know what you heard and didn't hear. Yuquan is the second. Uh, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to approve the unpaid leave of absence of Victor Zuniga as presented, motion? Matt, second? Yuquan? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion to appoint Lee Compton and Laura Kroll as band and chorus club advisors as presented, motion? Matt, second, Barbara? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to appoint the following spring sports coaches as presented? And there's a list of them, um, can I have the motion, please? Aaron, second? TJ? All in favor? Opposed?
You're muted.
Sorry. Motion to appoint Jen Penya as the spring sports overseer as presented, motion? Aaron, second? Second? Michelle? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to accept the resignation of Crystal McGuire as school bus monitor as presented, a motion, please? Matt, second, Barbara? All in favor? Opposed or abstained? One, TJ?
Abstained for the record.
Abstained, I know, you're not opposing it. Um, motion carries six with one abstaining. A motion to appoint Crystal McGuire as school bus driver and substitute school monitor as presented? Motion, please? Michelle, second, Barbara, all in favor? Abstained? TJ, motion carries six with one abstaining. A motion to appoint Joyce Ma- Mang-Melli and Breeze Williams as non-certified substitute teachers as presented, very sorry about the names. Motion, please? Matt, second, Barbara? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion to appoint Deborah Weissman as substitute school bus driver as presented, motion? Michelle, second, Barbara? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion to accept the CSECPSE recommendations as presented at this meeting, motion, please? Matt, second, Barbara? All in favor? Opposed? 7-0. Um, before we enter into executive session, our next meeting is uh, May 18th at 7:00 PM, location to be determined. Um, thank you, everybody, for.
And I say.
And join. Sure.
So, sorry, I was, uh, reached out to by a community member that is on the meeting tonight, and her microphone is not working, and she tried to speak during, um, privilege of the floor, the Lord, uh, and, and did not have a chance to speak, so she asked me to speak for her. Is that okay with the board that?
Absolutely. Uh, anyone have any objections? Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, so this is from Teresa Finn, who is on. She says, "Thank you so much for keeping Mr. Finn in your thoughts. I know he's watching every monthly meeting, and I know he's smiling tonight. I'm really happy as well that you will be bringing the lobby area into a state that will finally look complete. I think most people who enter feel like we are still under construction. I feel so strongly that keeping the aesthetic qualities of our buildings, both inside and out, is important to our community. We want to be sure to always have our best face on so that we're encouraging new young families to move in and show the district how amazing we are." That's it.
Thank you, Teresa. Excellent thoughts as usual, and yes, John is always watching us. Um, okay, and then, uh, we have our meeting, no action will be taken after our executive session. Best wishes to the candidates, to who will be joining us, um, July 1st. And can I have a motion to enter into executive session for the reason regarding the employment history of particular persons? A motion, please? Aaron, second, Barbara? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries 7-0? We are done. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.